It is September 9th, 2025, and the time is 6:00 PM. The meeting is being held at the Ocean Shores Convention Center. The meetings are simulcast and archived on KOSW Radio. Meetings are livestreamed with closed captioning and may be accessed on the city website under Council Recordings. Meetings can also be viewed on cable channel 68 Thursdays at 12:00 PM and Sundays at 10:00 AM. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Sires, here. Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Gribble.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Councilmember Wills.
Here.
Like a motion to excuse Mr. Hartman from tonight's meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, Richard, would you lead us in that? And we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you. Ceremonies and proclamations. We have a proclamation that's going to be read by Councilmember Denise Sires, Constitution Week Proclamation.
Proclamation. Whereas September 17, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, that Ocean Shores recognizes the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. We encourage the community members to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, introduced and adopted this ninth day of September 2025.
All right, thank you. Announcements, we have board and committee vacancies. Two vacancies on the radio board, two vacancies on the planning commission, one vacancy on the parks board, one vacancy on the lodging tax advisory committee, and one vacancy on the airport advisory committee. For appointments tonight, I would like to appoint Raymond Fracker and Larry Hanson to the radio board with council consensus. All right, unanimous, thank you. I would like to appoint Judy Stadler to the planning commission on council consensus. All right, thank you. Got a couple more here. I would like to appoint Stacy Lynn to the parks board with council consensus. All right, thank you. And I would like to appoint John Carpenter to the airport advisory committee with council consensus. All right, thank you, all unanimous. All right, we move on to reports, and we have a report presented by our library director, Keith Owen, and library board member Pam Notchbor. Naybor. Oh. I know that it's not spelled like that, though, so I apologize.
So this is her first time.
I'm a new person. New member. And what I'd like to...
No, no. Oh, hold on. It's her first time. This is Pam Naver, and she is the second newest library board of trustees member. And I need to brag because, because all of you, we now have a full library board, which we haven't had since the beginning of the year. So, thank you, council. Pam, your turn now, and you get to talk into that.
Please speak into the mic.
I'm here to tell you what the library is doing for the whole city of Ocean Shores. They have a calendar of events, and every month they have the same things like Storytime and a D and D, Dungeons and Dragons. And yet each month there also is individual classes or classes that are only showing up once a month. In October, they happen to have, well, let me get back to September. September, they've got a master's gardener coming. And then they also will follow that up by a person that knows about mushrooms. And so it's kind of tied together. These are the sheets that are available at the library and online. And the other thing is the up and coming month of October, there is a time for kids to come in and paint pumpkins, and as well as they're having a local author day where our local authors will come in and talk about the books that they've written.
Thank you, Pam.
Good job first time around. Summer reading for all ages this year was quite spectacular. Nico and Michelle created these collages, which I know you can't see, but they are on our webpage, and they kind of capture and help us remember the exciting events that happened this summer, which I think is a fabulous idea. All the events were well attended, and they were for all ages. However, you could probably guess who had the greatest attendance, and it was this first kickoff reptile man had over 175 to 200 people. Fabulous, fabulous. Obviously, we will have him back next year, I hope. And then he was on the outdoor pavilion. And the highlight for teens, I hope you're not hungry, was a chocolate spectacular. And the kids loved the chocolate. And it was a chocolate fountain, and no chocolate on the floor. Worked out really good. It was, it was really yummy. And then we had a really fun first time appearance with a lady whose name is Vicky, and she goes by V for Vicky, and it was V's bees, like honeybees. And she came in one of the suits, and she brought a hive with all these bees very securely crawling around. The kids loved it. The parents were just like, wah, what is it? It's really good. So I'm going to have her back. She also had a bee suit for a child that she showed how the suits went on and the hood went down, and it was, it was fabulous, just fabulous. So, we had 77 teens sign up. They tracked pages. They read 55,500 pages in these eight weeks. We had 55 adults sign up, double from last year. I'm real excited about that. And we had 94 sign up for the children's, and they claimed 482 prizes out of the treasure chest. So it was very, very successful summer. The theme was Level Up at Your Library. And I gave this presentation to the friends yesterday, and I said, "You probably will guess why I'm very excited about next year's theme, because it's called Plant a Seed." And if you know me, I like to get my hands dirty, so this will be a very fun year. All these programs are completely sponsored by the Ocean Shores Friends of the Library, and that's at 50 cents a book, book sale. So support their book sales, please, because these programs are fabulous for our community. Now, question for each one of you and probably the audience as well. Do you have a current library card? Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, I see some heads, okay. Well, September is National Get a Card Library Month, and we are celebrating that. Last week, we took a flyer to each of the Ocean Shores Elementary students. Every single one got my very first library card. And inside was a very boring but necessary application. However, if they filled out the application and come into the library, we still have a treasure chest of toys, and they can have two or three toys just for dropping by and getting their card. So we're real good about that. And then Michelle and I are going to ace the pharmacy and the IGA to promote Get Your Library Card with tables in their lobbies, and as well as explain the fall events that are coming up. And we also are kind of, you might want to say, hitting up everybody that uses the meeting room to the tune of almost 1,500 people last month and making sure they have a library card. So we want that library used. As Pam said, we have our local authors' fair. This will be the third annual. It's on October 4th. It's a one-day affair with two sessions this year, from 10:00 to 12:00 and 2:00 to 4:00. And we have 32, I know you can't see these, but again, they will be on the webpage, 32 fabulous authors, and 15 of them have not been to the other two fairs, which I'm excited about. And we have a kind of a famous author, Sheila Roberts, who lives in Shores part-time, is also coming, and I'm very excited about that. Again, totally sponsored by the Friends of the Library. So outreach and getting information out about the library is an important objective with the Board of Trustees, who have missions and goal statements. One aspect of that, as you can see in our programming, is connecting with children. There are, as I've said, and as Pam and the other board members have said, many fabulous in-library programs for children all year round. However, we do go out of the building, and we visit the elementary school quarterly and the high school, junior high school, weekly. During these visits, the elementary school, Michelle, my colleague, tells stories, promotes the library, and has fun with the 250 kids in the school. She also attended the opening house last week of the elementary school. For the junior high and high school, she visits every Monday during their lunch. She's in the hallway, very visible, and you probably know that the high school does not have a library. So we act as a full-service library to those 300 children. We bring books to check out. We take books back to check in. We get requests and bring them out. We issue library cards, and we promote our events. So partnership and cooperation with the schools is quite evident, and I have two examples. Is two teachers last year awarded the kids that read in the teen summer reading program this year the Level Up extra credit this year in their classes for participating in the reading program. And another teacher gave extra credit to the kids if they showed her their library card. So stay tuned for more exciting information in the fall. We'll be back. And as Pam said, there's always the library webpage. It's updated Mondays every week, and it's oslibrary.info. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have public communication to council. Public communication is intended for communication to the city council regarding general council business or policy not on tonight's agenda. Address comments or questions to the city council body, not to an individual member or to city staff. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We request that comments be nice and respectful. This is not a question-and-answer time, and council cannot engage in conversation with the public. No person may use the public comment for the purpose of campaign or advertisement. The city council will begin the time once the citizen has started their public comment. At two minutes, you will see a green light, followed by a yellow light indicating 30 seconds remain in the public comment period. A red light will notify the reader that the public comment time has ended. Order of public comments will be first individuals attending in person, second individuals attending remotely, and the general public comments, whether in person or remotely, will continue in the usual position on the agenda. Public comment for agenda items that were removed will be addressed following the conclusion of general public comment. So Scott, what do we got up first?
All right, we've got seven comments this evening from the general public. The first, Susan Canari, appreciation.
Thank you, Susan Canari. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Council, for declaring Constitution Week September 17th to the 23rd and urging us to, quote, "Vigilantly protect freedoms and remember that lost rights may never be regained." Inspiring words, but proclamations are cheap. Ink on paper, applause all around. The real cost comes when citizens actually use those freedoms, when we step up here and say things you'd rather not hear. That's when the Constitution gets expensive. It requires patience, tolerance, discomfort. If we're serious about vigilance, the best way to celebrate Constitution Week is not with parchment proclamations, but by letting citizens speak their piece, local, national, or otherwise. The framers didn't give us the Constitution to hang on the wall. They gave it to be practiced, especially when it makes the powerful uncomfortable. Thank you, and happy Constitution Week. May it last longer than three minutes. Thank you.
This next public comment does not have a name attached to it. The name says Democracy Matters, but there's no person, so I don't know who that is.
Hello, Mayor, city council members, citizens of Shores. Thank you for this time and for your courteous consideration. I recently read the mayor's response regarding the censorship of the phrase "democracy matters." This occurred last year, but I don't think that the topic has faded. I don't think the situation is less relevant because it has not still been set to rest. As it turns out, democracy does matter. We heard that from our last speaker, and I think that our council's proclamation of Constitution Week also makes that, celebrating the Constitution makes that clear. In this letter, the mayor's sabotage of the iOS voter registration booth last year, and that's evident in the mayor's response, is, requires that this drum keeps on beating. Perhaps this mayor is so ill-informed or lacking in experience as to not realize that volunteers are... in experience as to not realize that volunteers are scheduled. They don't just show up unexpectedly. Keep that in mind now. As you read his response, go back and check out his divisive language. He talks about the opposite side. And he takes pride in that achievement, which isn't really veiled very thinly, excuse me, thickly, so as to be hidden between the lines. This isn't really my best hour. Some will call my words divisive, maybe, but let's consider the red elephant in the room. The old adage, "It takes two to tango," meaning every dispute requires two people to throw fuel into a fire to keep it going, of course. But in that dance, let's picture this. One partner starts quite purposefully stepping on the other partner's toes, kicking them in the shins, and then aiming for their posterior when they bend over to grab those stinging shins. Who's responsible for that pair looking like they're clueless, bumping into other dancers and wreaking havoc on the dance floor? How is this local? Let me draw the lines connecting the dots for those who can or will choose not to. When the dancer doing the stomping smiles blaming his partner and then claims he will heal the divide, I'm not buying it. Likewise, when that partner touts the rules of fair play while thumbing his nose at those very rules, maybe, just maybe, his words should be doubted. I'd like to draw the line more clearly, but that would require naming the elephant. Thank you again for your time.
What's your name? I'm sorry, we didn't get that. Thank you.
Tom Hamilton, Unenforced City Code Violations.
Mayor, City Council, city staff, my fellow citizens. In October 2022, Governor Jay Inslee officially ended the state of emergency for COVID-19, terminating all remaining emergency proclamations with some exceptions. In April 2023, even those restrictions were removed by the governor. Why is this important? Ocean Shores Executive Order 2016, dealing with food and beverage establishments cited in Section 4, end days and time of this order. I quote, "The emergency measures proclamation of executive order 2016 shall be in full force and effect unless in order of the governor. Until such time as Gray's Harbor County moves into Phase 4, the governor's Stay Home, Stay Safe COVID Response Plan, or until the mayor rescinds her declaration of emergency related to COVID issues, or the mayor rescinds this order. Or, it seems pretty clear that the city's order was rescinded by the governor's actions, the light of city council returning to normal meetings without health protection requirements, and all businesses in the city doing the same." That brings us to August 2023, when a temporary permit was issued to the Ocean Porous Tap Room for a tent without an electrical permit or allowing portable indoor heaters. I might note that in August of 2023, the Tap Room filed a permit with the county tax assessor for a temporary tent. Prior to the permit being issued, the Tap Room had been operating for approximately seven months without a business license. The permit stated that the tent, I quote, "must be removed in 90 days," end quote. Today, that tent is not compliant with city codes, and in the last five years has only operated for 270 days with a valid permit. It would appear to only operate through a disingenuous interpretation of city code. It would seem to me that there are valid code violations and safety concerns that the city has chosen to turn a blind eye to for one particular business. The city recently shut down a major hotel in the city for violations. The Ocean Porous Tap Room, currently in violation of its last permit, uses an extension cord that other extension cords are plugged into. Safety issue, potential city liability. Does the city really want additional liability, given the issue with the lawsuit over Driftwood on the beach? Help me to understand how the city continues to allow these violations. You have my contact information. Reach out. I'd really like to know, as would my fellow citizens.
Jane Shattuck, EMS fee discount for hotels, motels.
Jane Shattuck, Ocean Shores resident. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens of Ocean Shores. I want to address the longstanding 60% discount on EMS fees for hotels and motels, which is outdated and unfair to utility payers. Currently, hotels pay $12.39 per unit, while all other utility-paying property owners pay $30.57, a difference of $18.18. For a decade, utility billing property owners have been subsidizing this discount for businesses that are able to pass costs on to their customers while utility payers are on fixed incomes and/or wages cannot. Events like the Fourth of July generate large profits for hotels, yet residents are the ones funding EMS overtime and services through their bills. This creates an imbalance where profiting, where those profiting most are contributing least. Council originally approved the 60% discount without a rate study, and the recent CPI addition was approved without a rate study. If no study was needed then, it should not be used now to delay addressing this inequity. In fact, this issue was reviewed by two council members in the past while discussing a sliding scale for low-income residents, but no action was taken. The original justification, the hotel struggled with off-season occupancy, is no longer valid. Off-season tourism has grown. And fairness were truly the goal, other seasonal businesses should have received a similar discount, but only hotels and motels benefited from the discount. At minimum, hotels should now be required to submit occupancy reports to justify continuing any discount. Another concern is that many hotels have converted units into long-term rentals. These units are no longer dependent on tourism, yet it's unclear how they are being accounted for under the EMSB structure. Long-term rentals should be assessed the standard EMSB per unit, just like any other utility-paying property owner, since they have guaranteed year-round occupancy. As with property taxes, the larger the pool of contributors, the lower the burden on everyone. Right now, hotels are paying $18.18 less per unit than every other property owner. Reducing the discount would create a fairer, more sustainable system and help ease the impact of future increases. In conclusion, after a decade, it is time to reevaluate the 60% discount. Council has already updated permit and fire fees to reflect current costs. The EMSB structure deserves the same review to ensure equity for all. Thank you.
Ed Welter, Westport, commenting on Foghorn.
Good evening, Mayor. I'd like to thank you for the tour of the upcoming clinic and the opportunity to come to the council meeting. Being in Ocean Shores, I didn't want to miss an opportunity to address the public debate over the foghorn. I'm not only addressing that as the mayor, but as someone who has taken a boat from quite literally Columbia to Dutch Harbor, sailed around Vancouver Island, held a 50-ton captain's license, I've completed the federal maritime law enforcement training program, and I'm a Coast Guard veteran. So I have some opinions about aids to navigation. One of the first things you do when you're stationed at Gray's Harbor County, or I'm sorry, stationed Gray's Harbor, is you memorize the bar. You do this for several reasons, and it's a good opportunity to point out that that is not the only sound signal on that bar. The red line, which you would keep to your right when you're coming home, is made up of 2, 4, 6, 8, 14, 18, and 26. Those are the numbers for the buoys. It's made up of four whistles, three bells. The green line is made up of 3, 5, 11, 13, and 21. It goes whistle, bell, whistle, whistle, gong. The reason you memorize that sequence when you first get stationed there, which I no longer have memorized, is so that you can find your way home in the fog or in the dark. I can say personally, it's a task that I've had to do at least twice, once on a very small Boston Whaler that did not have enough electronics to be where I was at the time. All of Gray's Harbor has a deep-seated maritime tradition, and all of these signals in aids to navigation are about the safety of that community. And I just wanted to make sure that we remember that if we find some of these things a little annoying or a little frustrating. They're there to save lives and bring our neighbors home. Thank you very much.
P. J. Faria, and there's no topic listed.
Good evening, citizens, city council, and Mayor Eldwin. The topic is actually helping to put something to a calm rest. I am here this evening to clarify an issue repeatedly raised by individuals who were not present at the 2024 Sand and Sawdust Voter Registration Table, yet are now demanding an apology from our mayor. A couple of representatives from the indivisibles requested a free table for this event from Mayor Eldwin. To be inclusive, the mayor invited the North Beach Republicans Women's Club, of which I serve as president, to jointly participate. He made it clear to them that our organization would also be in attendance. As part of the National Federation of Republican Women's Clubs, established in 1938, we take seriously our responsibility to conduct ourselves with respect and integrity. We follow all rules for voter registration. Registering voters is a privilege that must be handled fairly and without pressure, regardless of political affiliation. Our goal was to help all potential voters feel comfortable registering in a neutral, nonpartisan environment. The Washington Secretary of State outlines clear rules in the Vote: Washington Guide to Registering Voters. Partisan materials cannot be handed out or displayed. When we arrived, bringing only official voter registration forms and wearing no party-identifying attire, we were met with hostility. A few individuals shouted, "What are they doing here?" The table had already been preset with partisan materials. On the wall was a banner reading "Register to Vote: Democracy Depends on It," and the registration forms were clipped to boards with indivisible stickers. Among the handouts were documents titled "Don't Vote for a Felon," and "Your Vote Does Count, and Here's Why You Live in a Democracy." Because of this disruption, a call was placed to the mayor and the convention center manager. We requested that the partisan documents be removed and that the words "Save Our Democracy" be folded under on the banner. The remainder of the weekend went smoothly, with volunteers having very respectful conversations. Now, one year later, some have claimed their freedom of speech was violated. In truth, every visitor and volunteer should be thanking the mayor and the city for ensuring all voices had the opportunity to register freely, making their own choices without pressure in a safe and welcoming environment. My hope is that Ocean Shores residents, we can accept that while we have differences and so forth, the rules must be respected. Thank you for your time and attention, and with this statement, we consider the matter addressed and will not be revisiting it again. Thank you.
And then lastly, Sarah Logan, Community.
Good evening. We'll address it one more time. Let me be perfectly clear. The city of Ocean Shore supports voter registration and civic participation. That's why, as a good faith effort, the city, specifically the mayor, had extended a free booth to two groups, indivisible Ocean Shores Women's Republican Group, under the condition that the activity remained nonpartisan, as outlined in the Washington State's Voter Registration Guidelines. The issue arose that was not about silencing voices. It was about maintaining neutrality at a nonpartisan booth on the city property, a standard that is not only best practice but necessary to ensure public trust in the process. At the center of this controversy is a banner that read "Register to Vote: Democracy Depends on It." While the phrase may seem innocent to some during the 2024 election year, and in today's political climate, that slogan is commonly understood and used by political campaigns and advocacy groups as a partisan rallying, particularly in criticism of one party or a current president. The decision to ask for the part of the banner to be covered and the partisan materials removed from the table were not made to silence a specific person. Complaints were received from citizens and attendees, and both the city clerk and the convention center general manager, acting professionally and politely, simply requested that the tagline be rolled up and the partisan materials be removed to preserve the nonpartisan integrity of the space at the event. Contrary to the inflammatory narrative that continues to take up space, no one was silenced and no one was denied access to voter engagement. This was about ensuring a fair and neutral space, not about suppressing speech or targeting any one organization. Unfortunately, indivisible Ocean Shores members responded not by working collaboratively, but by escalating the issue, lodging accusations of civil rights violations, contacting outside organizations, and launching protests. This response has caused division in the community, ironically, at events which are meant to bring people together. The mayor has consistently demonstrated that he can and will work with all sides, Republican, Democrat, Ku Klux fans, Husky fans, or otherwise. His only goal has been to unite, not to divide. He even created a community engagement committee, which includes people from across the political spectrum, and has already produced great outcomes. Let's be honest, we live in a democracy because we are entitled to vote by the Constitution. But democracy also depends on civility, mutual respect, and a shared commitment to fairness. That's what this city was protecting, and we stand by that decision.
That concludes public comment. Nobody on the line tonight?
All right. So we'll move to staff reports, and we have a staff report from our city administrator, Scott Anderson. All right. This is going to be fairly brief, but let me make sure I get the information exactly right on this, because it's changed a little bit. The first is a commemoration and tribute to those who lost their lives on 9/11. At 9 o'clock on 9/11, there will be a commemoration at the Ocean Shores Fire Department, and all are welcome to attend. So please feel free to show up at the Ocean Shores Fire Department at 9 o'clock on 9/11 as a tribute to all those who lost their lives during that tragedy. In addition, our fire department, seven members, have started their two-week orientation, so we have a new staff. And then lastly, and briefly, work on the berm. We were very surprised that we received an extra, it looks like we've received an extra $700,000 from the Department of Commerce that will go to solidifying and increasing the berm and strengthening it. We are also placing cameras along the berm. They're going to track and monitor the rates of erosion over time, so we have a better idea of what areas might need additional cobble and/or rock and/or even hard armoring. And we are also now having to look at the Oi Hut Bay Wildlife Preserve, because of course, by placing the berm where we've placed it and not going into Oi Hut Bay, we're starting to see encroachment and erosion issues on the bay itself. Long term, as we all know, the Remnant Jettie is the critical answer to reclaiming that land and reclaiming that bay. We are still in the middle of doing our CTP, Critical Technical Partners Program, study that will help us give that information so that we can take it to the Army Corps of Engineers and to the Port of Gray's Harbor, and highly encourage them to rebuild the Remnant Jettie that will protect the, you know, the lives and property that is down there. So that's all. Thank you.
Right. Thanks, Scott. Next, we go to Council liaison reports and committee reports, and we'll start with Denise, please.
I attended Agenda Review, the Finance Committee, and LTAC. So I'll start just going over. We had a very big agenda for finance. So I will let my other two colleagues give some detail, but we covered the July financial update. We also looked at the golf course financials. We talked about the problems that have occurred with payment from Fire District 7. We also talked about the cost allocation process and review. And the cost allocation, just as a reminder, that's about assigning the cost of central services to the users in the various departments. Previously, we were doing that through transfers, and our finance department has been working extremely hard on cleaning up that process and using cost allocation, and that will result in a budget amendment in November. We also talked about the tax levy process, the annual property tax levy, which will be coming up. And I think that's about it of general interest. So Allison and So Allison and Richard were also there, so they can fill in details of any of those. We also had the first LTAC meeting, and since we have Westport officials here, thank you to them. We used their information packet as a basis for ours, extending it from one page to four pages, in which we gave a little more background about what LTAC was, and particularly the eligibility and the selection criteria. We have listed 12 selection criteria, and we will use that to rank all of the applicants that come in. We're also moving to a reimbursement model rather than giving the funds out initially, and we will be looking at having regular reporting of those organizations that collect, that receive the LTAC funds, which, those will be reported to the LTAC committee to increase the transparency so all of our citizens, as well as members of the council, can see that. The other change that we are talking about was, anyone who has paid attention to LTAC will know that we often have two distributions during a year. This past year, we did not have a distribution in April, and that was because we had allocated all of the anticipated funds at the November meeting. So we are looking at doing a holdback. We don't know exactly how much at this point. Our finance department will give us an analysis of what that means. By law, we have to expend 90%, so it's not as if we are keeping money for ourselves, but we will be looking at that holdback to make sure that we have funds for any kind of emergencies that come up, for any kind of overbudgets that the recipients come upon. And if we do have money left over, left over, so to speak, that money will be put out again in April for more organizations to apply for. And we do have three meetings scheduled for October, and those are on the calendar.
All right, thanks. Tom?
Well, I really have nothing to say today. I was out of state for a week, and prior to that, my business, well, my employment has limited some of my free time, but I'll get back to it.
All right, Lisa Gribble.
Thank you, mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
Lisa, Scott?
Thank you. I attended agenda setting. Public safety was canceled for this month. It will have, we'll have another meeting in October, and then met with the golf course, and we will be meeting with the mayor the week of, the 22nd of this month, to discuss future contracts.
All right, Allison Klein?
I signed warrants. I attended agenda setting. I did observe the LTAC meeting, and then I attended the finance committee meeting.
All right, Richard Wills?
Thank you. I signed warrants. I attended the finance committee meeting, and I would need a microscope in order to uncover the fine print that Denise has invited me to speak about, so she covered the situation pretty thoroughly. Thank you, Denise. I, the freshwater waste meeting has been, was canceled. Also, I met briefly with Mayor Eldwin yesterday, and I thought it was a very productive meeting. So life is good.
All right, thanks. I got a short mayor report. I thought I'd update people with what's going on with our clinic. We are now to a point where the rough, wall rough end is just about complete, and we've started sheet rocking. Sprinkler work is done, the HVAC work is done, so we're waiting for a ceiling to be put in. That'll be a T-bar ceiling going in for that, so that's going along real well. South Fire Station, the foundation for the, setting the modular is poured, and that's being held up because we got to wait for that to cure. So we got a couple more weeks probably to wait for that to come up to strength, and then we can move that modular down and start getting that set up for our firemen. This Thursday, we have a meeting with our state rep, Adam Bernbaum, to work on our fire break, and he has done a real good job. He's a real good advocate for us on that, so Scott and I are meeting with him to discuss the steps we need to take to work on getting that done, so that fire break can protect the community south of the hotels. Also, our congresswoman, Emily Randall, is coming to town here in Ocean Shores this month and to also discuss issues that the city's been working on for the citizens. So we're getting interest and help from our legislative people here for our district, and that's all I have, so. Yeah?
PJ, can you stand up? Happy birthday.
All right, thanks, Tom. We get a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Like to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, Tom. We will recess this regular city council meeting at 6:45 and convene into a special meeting of the Transportation Benefit District. This will be presented by Transportation Benefit District Board Secretary Sarah Logan and our Public Works Director, Ricky Victoriano.
Good evening, council. We have Transportation Benefit District money, and as you know, this is funding that can be used on traffic control, traffic repairs, things like that throughout our city for road maintenance. We've had the privilege of having a public works director that identified two different projects with quite a few different repairs that need to be made. Please mute your mic. And so this will be budget request number four and budget request number five. Both of these will take separate motions to approve inside of this special meeting, but I'll turn it over to our public works director to tell you about budget request number one and the maintenance repairs that that will entail.
So budget request number four, we have some work that starts out with some grind and overlay asphalt repair on some larger sections of road that have some settling or some cracking and potholing, and so those are going to be the big, bigger chunk of this project here, and then we have some smaller stuff where we had to cut some asphalt for water repairs or storm drain, storm drain projects. You'll see on the south end of town, everything southeast and southwest is going to be storm drain projects where we cut the asphalt to run over across the road or to run, oh, sorry. And so that's, that's just about it there. It was expanding infrastructure for stormwater and storm drainage. Before I move on to number five, is there any questions? Oh, no? Okay, I'll, oh.
I think, should we take public comment first and then?
Oh, okay.
Counsel? Yeah, thank you. Are we done with that then? Any public comment?
Yeah.
Out there? Seeing none, so, Richard, go ahead.
So Ricky, I'm, I hope this does not put you on the spot, but, and regarding to the asphalt grinding, it is my understanding that the problem that's creating those swales in the asphalt is a rotting tree underneath. So fill us in, but not intended, about why we grind and overlay instead of digging down and removing that rotting debris.
So a big reason why we grind and overlay is if there's cracks in the asphalt that aren't repaired, we get water infiltration, it freezes, creates ice, and it expands underground. So if those issues aren't addressed early on, they get worse. In the case of the big trees underground that are rotting away, you'll see a really large divot across the road. These are potholes where we're missing asphalt or where we have cracks that weren't sealed.
All right, counsel, any other questions or comments? We have counsel action? Yes, Allison?
So I would like to make a motion to approve a request of the Transportation Benefit District Number One Board to approve the 2025 budget request number four.
Second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lisa Gribble.
Okay, that's unanimous then. I didn't see your hand go up. Sorry. All right, so I guess we will close this special meeting?
No, we saw budget request number five.
Oh, we got another one?
Yeah, so, so budget request number five, this is going to cover manhole repairs in two different parts of town, cutting the asphalt around them, getting them back up to grade, and doing the asphalt around them, and any fill work that's needed there. And then the other one is the storm drain that everyone's also familiar with in the southbound lane approaching the roundabout on Point Row. So those two storm drain catch basins will be brought back up to grade.
All right, that's good, because I've gotten a few phone calls about that one in particular. Is there any public comment out there about that? All right, counsel? Yes, Lisa?
I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the request of the Transportation Benefit District Number Word Board to approve the 2025 budget request number five.
Second.
You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess that's unanimous, all right.
My car says thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll close this special meeting in the Transportation Benefit District and reconvene the regular city council meeting at 6:50. We have no old business, we have no new business tonight, but we do have a discussion on a trapping ordinance, and that's going to be led by Planning Commission Chair Mark Lawless and our Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife Representative, Scott Harris.
Mr. Mayor, city council, residents of Ocean Shores, I want to thank you for having this discussion about the trapping in Ocean Shores. I know there's been a lot of discussion. Excuse me, still losing my voice. I haven't got my voice back from the game the other day. So how this started is we got, were visited by a couple of residents through the Planning Commission who had suffered some property damage. They brought in pictures, and it was clear that there was some property damage from beavers on their property. And so we started to look at this, and we found that, first off, the ordinance that is current, 8.20.100, was last updated in 1976. That's the first thing that got our attention. Then the next thing was, that ordinance says, "The city council recognizes that the practice of trapping for animals is very hazardous in an area where families reside and businesses are carried on, and declares that it's the policy of the city to prohibit trapping of any nature whatsoever within the city limits." So none whatsoever. So that was an interesting revelation to us. "Any person who hunts for fur-bearing animals with any trapping device of any nature whatsoever within the city limits shall be guilty of a Class B offense as defined in Title VII of the Code." Again, 1976. The exemption is the Washington State Game Department shall be allowed to trap for animals with the approval of the Public Safety Director of the city when such activity is necessary under circumstances. Now, that caught us by surprise, because who's the public safety officer not defined in the municipal code? So after reaching out to the chief, we found that that's really the chief of police. So just today, as we're working through this, in the Planning Commission, we passed a, an ordinance of the, to be sent to council, making in addition to definitions in Ocean Shores Municipal Code 8.20, saying, "The public safety officer referenced in this ordinance is determined to be the police chief or his or her designated representative." So we'll put that to you to fix that issue that came up. So this particular couple of residents tried to get, engage a licensed trapper, I think it was from Elma, and as soon as they had this discussion, they talked it was going to be $150 for the trapper to come and, and deal with the issue as defined by the residents. As, he says, "So where do you live?" "Oh, Ocean Shores." "Oh, I'm sorry, can't help you because the code says none whatsoever." So that was the other thing that really piqued our interest as to, think about that, and I'd like you to role play with me. We're all residents here in Ocean Shores. We all have property. What would we do if we incurred property damage or bodily harm caused by an animal? Just like these two community members, they couldn't do anything, because the municipal code doesn't allow them to proceed. So what we on the Planning Commission decided that we would do is instead of none whatsoever, we'd come up with a four-step process for evaluation. Was there damage? What does a resident do? So that's what we did, and I could read the ordinance, but really it comes down to, "We believe these changes reflect a balanced approach between public safety, animal welfare, and the need for responsible wildlife management." So we set forth to put forth the, the four, actually, there's five here in the data. 8.20.110, trapping wildlife threatening a human safety or causing property damage, procedure, limitations, and conditions. One, subject to limitations and conditions established by the city, the owner, the owner's immediate family, the owner's documented employee, or a tenant of real property may contact City Animal Control to establish the threat of human safety or property damage caused. We're not asking them to trap an animal. We're asking them to come do a visual that damage or harm has been caused. Yes?
Question, you talk about property damage. Are you going to define that? Because some people consider, you know, I planted $1,000 worth of roses, they're all gone, there's property damage, and a deer took the fuzz off the horns on my siding, and are you going to define that?
We had those discussions, thank you very much, but how do you define that? Because, see, that's part of the issue in having someone go and eyeball and say, "Oh, yes, there's, there's definitely property damage here. Let's move on to the next step." And so it, we talked about that, but to define it, there's so many variables there that could occur.
That's why, I guess, I get, I know this is our conversation time, but that's part of my, I guess, concern is that we're mentioning it.
Yes.
And we have no, I mean, that could be open-ended. You could have somebody that's really, you know, one extreme and the other, and it just is a concern.
I totally, I totally agree with you that it opens it up, but I also think that it'd be very, very difficult for us, whether it's Planning Commission or council, to define that, because there's so many variables that go with it. We did discuss that and decided it was a slippery slope to define that, but I, I hear what you're saying. Scott, you had something?
And it is, same issue that you're presenting, it's an extremely difficult thing to find. I mean, the only thing you could do is a numeric value if it does $1,000 or more of damage that, you know. of damage, that, you know, I don't, I just don't know how else, because you're right, it runs, she's absolutely correct, someone ate roses, right, we had eight roses and all those types of things, so I don't, it is difficult.
Does it have to be in here?
Well, so, the folks that had the original issue, they had property damage, they brought, showed us pictures, I mean, there was property damage, but at to what level did it raise? There's a question, right? Someone look at those pictures that we did and go, "Beavers are doing what beavers are doing." And others would say, "Yeah, there's some action needs to be required, and it should be done." So, yeah, we totally agree, the Planning Commission totally agrees with your assessment, but why is it in here? So we tried to come up with steps to take, so that community members could remediate an issue, because right now, the code says none whatsoever. It's pretty black and white, we're kind of shut out for any action to take care of the issue. So, what we did is, we tried to build in these four steps, just to get eyeballs on the issue and identify there is or there isn't, then go on to step two.
Yeah, Richard.
So, in the code, is there, who's evaluating the severity of this property damage? So I totally understand the ambiguity and why you're doing it this way, but is there an individual or who says, "Yes, that's property damage, and we need to address this"?
Right now, there's not.
So should we designate, should we, the city, designate somebody to fulfill this portion of this ordinance?
I believe so, and that's why it says, "Have the City Animal Control Officer go take a look and evaluate the situation that's reported by the resident. Get an eyeball on it, is there or is there not an issue? Then, once the city agrees, number, step number two, once the city agrees that there is a wildlife threat to human safety or causing property damage, the owner or representative will contact Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife to establish contact with a licensed wildlife control officer. Then, step three, the licensed wildlife control officer will be required to get the necessary permits from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife before trapping can begin, along with notifying the chief safety officer before placing of traps in the city. And when Scott came and sat with us when we were working through this, he acknowledged that he already contacts the chief of police before he sets trap in the city as the state's. So we're just following what is being done here. And then, number four, trapping will be consistent with RCW 77.15.194, or kill wildlife that is threatening human safety or causing property damage, licenses required under RCW 77.65.460, or authorization from the Washington Department of Field Wildlife Director under RCW 77.12.240. So those are already established guidelines from the state. And then, we added, number five, "All costs incurred for the trapping of wildlife shall be the responsibility of the property owner." So that's, those are the steps that we thought would be helpful for a property owner to go through to try to take care of the situation. Now, what we put forth that you got in your, in your documentation here, we did make one change. On the very last page, where it says 8.20.120 unlawful, "Any person who hunts fur-bearing animals," it said to include dogs and cats. We've stricken that out and said, "Any person who hunts fur-bearing animals excluding dogs and cats," except as outlined in 8.20.110, "with any trapping device of any nature whatsoever within the city shall be guilty of a Class B offense as defined by Title VII of this code." So, we exclude dogs and cats from that, which is different from what was written before.
Lisa, we're kind of going out of order, we got to have public comment, too.
I thought, this was council discussion, so after we had our discussion, I thought, because it's under discussion?
Okay.
I didn't know, what I was assuming? I just had a quick question, though, about, so if we have a bear that has attacked somebody, are we really making that person bear the cost of trapping the animal?
Well, when we worked through this before, and the people that came to us, they had contacted the licensed trapper, and he had quoted them $150, so that's what we were going off of. Scott, I mean?
Yeah, I'd like you to have Scott answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, bear, you know, so, I'm sorry, I'm kind of not familiar with this format here, but to just answer your question on the bear, no, they, there is no one that can trap a bear other than the agency. There's only specific animals under law, under Washington state law, that a homeowner or a wildlife control operator can trap under a nuisance wildlife situation, so, and that is kind of one of the issues in how this is written. You were dealing with 1970s, and our laws have changed, our laws are not perfect, because some of that was a knee-jerk reaction to an initiative that outlawed certain trapping methods. So, there's a lot of work to do, but just to stay with your question, no, WUCO cannot trap a bear, it's, there's 31 species of small game and fur-bearers, and it gets confusing, because we have unclassified wildlife, too, so there's some other issues in here, in how to bring that in. But no, they can't trap a bear, they can't trap deer, they can't, an elk wanders in town, a wolverine wanders in the town, no. I'm, effectively, I'm the only one authorized in the area to set a trap for a bear.
Thank you, any other, yes, Denise?
Yeah, I just have to say, I have a real problem with the damage to property, too. I mean, are you talking about animals getting into your crawl space and causing property damage? How do you define that? Is it my $1,000 of landscaping, where I have deer and bear who climb over my fence? Which is true, they both do. I think that's, I think it's more than a slippery slope. And I understand the, you know, the concern of someone who has had whatever their property damage was, you know, I do get that, but, you know, when the bear takes my trash into the empty lot next door, to me, that's just one of the perks of living here.
Yeah, I don't disagree with your assessment. Again, we talked about property damage and how to define that, but there's just so many different variations of things that could occur. There's no way, we felt that there's no way, if we listed them all, that we could ever get any variable that might occur. So, that's, the thing about the property damage was our thought, is just to get eyeballs on it and make an evaluation for the homeowner, to then take the next step.
All right, Richard?
So, thank you. First, I want to applaud the Planning Commission for all of the work that you've put in this, and I applaud the intent, but I have several issues with this ordinance, and would like to find a way to improve the ordinance, so that it actually benefits everything. So, bear with me just a moment, I'm going to start with feral cats, which are absolutely forbidden, even with, if we update this, and without going through all of the rig and roll, if we let one pair of, a mating pair of feral cats loose in the city, at the end of two years, we'll have more than 30. At the end of four years, we'll have several hundreds. At the end of seven years, we'll have 30,000 or 40,000, that's if something doesn't control them. So one of the things I would like to address, and I'm going to digress just a little bit, when this topic was brought up before, the big concern was liability to the city when another bear cub gets trapped in the trap, and if some adult or more likely children, child, is, gee, that's cool, and what's Mama Bear or Mama Kruger or Mama Coyote going to do to that adult or child? And that consideration was one of the reasons that the trapping ordinance didn't get any traction. So, I think that as we update this trapping ordinance, I would like to see a pathway for recovering lost pets, dogs and cats, and I would like to see a pathway for trapping feral cats and then neutering them, because ultimately, damage to the city when there's 20,000 cats running around would be significant, and it draws predators. And the whole issue with safety is the issue of predators, particularly the larger predators. So, so that's just one of the issues, but I want to let somebody else have a turn to talk before I go on.
All right, we have, yes, Lisa Gribble?
And I echo Richard, thank you for the work on this. Could you, we seem to be using just one specific example for what came to the Planning Commission and why you worked on the ordinance, could you just give some other examples that might happen across our city that this would then be applicable to help resolve?
Well, we did have, we did have two different residents bring pictures of damage that they felt occurred at their residences. Specifically, what we had were beavers chewing on, chewed through a tree, well, you know, I mean, we understand beavers do what beavers do, and unfortunately, in this case, they gnawed through a tree, they had some, in another situation, they had some pots for their plants that were made out of wood, and the beavers gnawed on those. And so, those were the two main things that had occurred, but I could think of, I mean, just a litany of things that homeowners may think rise to the level to call, to investigate, whether it's deer, whether it's bear knocking over things or whatever, or small animals, I know there are limitations on what can be trapped and what can't. Homeowners can't trap, that's one thing here, we're not allowing homeowners to trap, it must be a licensed wildlife operator who is licensed with the state to come trap, or, Scott, with Department of Fish and Wildlife. So, we're not, we're not writing this to allow homeowners to do the trapping, but we are trying to highlight letting a homeowner identify that something has occurred. And right now, with the current code, it's none whatsoever. So homeowners don't have a lot of room to do something if they identify damage or harm.
All right.
So, like, if somebody had raccoons in their attic, can you have someone come and get a raccoon, or we'd have to change this to get raccoons out of your attic?
No, I wouldn't think if I had a raccoon in my attic, I'll just speak for myself and let everybody else alone, I'm going to, I'm going to try to walk through these steps to get, to get that raccoon out of my attic. I'm not going to invite the raccoon to dinner, I'm, you know, so, I would definitely want to have some procedures in place to assist my family in getting Ronnie out of my attic.
All right, Tom?
You're waiting for me, aren't you? Okay, when it comes down to any ordinance and the citizens of the city in which those ordinances are passed, you're going to find people that want to get rid of the animal, no matter what the ordinance says. I've had people call me up saying, "Hey, do you have a trap for raccoons?" No, I'm not going to give you a trap for a raccoon, because I'm not going to get the liability when that raccoon bites your fingers, because it's a trap that got openings in it. If you have any other animals in your house or outside, you got to get the rats, you're going to get the raccoons, if you feed your dogs outside or the cat outside, you're going to get those animals to your house, which is going to bring the bigger ones. So the ordinance, I understand, people not wanting their property damage, but soon after I moved in here, in this city, I had a beaver trying to pull, cut down one of my big trees, and I just put wire around it, he never came back, tree-hilled, those type of things. So I understand getting an ordinance, but we got to be careful, because once you say you can do this and this scenario, you're going to have people doing other things. Not everybody, but it only takes one or two, "Oh yeah, I did this," and they do it. So, I think we need to work on this a little bit more, just to clear it up. I've talked to Scott quite a bit about this, and so I think we can, we can get it down to we're, we're working on it, and everybody's protected.
Yeah, I totally agree, and when Scott came and visited us, he gave some remedies that citizens can use to protect themselves from having those incidents occur in the first place.
Did you want to address that?
Yeah, if I can address some things. So one, thank you for, you know, asking our advice or including it. Kind of had some prepared notes, but, you know, kind of, just come on and try and address a couple of questions. So, damage is a big one in there to me, too, what does that mean? There's how we do things at the state level, and I've worked around Ocean Shores long enough to know that there's also the Ocean Shores level of things that we've got. Can we make these work? Yes, but I think it's going to take a lot of work, because as I've done more of a deep dive into it, you know, just different things come up, but to talk about, like the beaver chewing on the tree and whatnot, technically, the wildlife control operator would come out and should be making non-lethal recommendations first, okay? So maybe if we think along that lines, when, you know, that, before, you know, so maybe the landowner contacts at WUCO, then, you know, that, you know, we call them wildlife control operators, or WUCO for short, that they look at and say, "Yeah, I think you need to trap it," well, then they have to make just, you know, then at that point, maybe it's the WUCO that contacts the city and explains why they think you need it, and then, because, you know, your staff doesn't have the training and experience I have, but they're a lot smarter than a lot of people give them credit for, and can say, "Yeah, no." Because for me, like, if I, you know, I'm kind of, I kind of wonder what would have happened if the WUCO actually would have went through the permitting process, because if I see it come across my desk and somebody says, you know, and I should explain how that trap works, so that permit's going to be issued if it meets certain criteria, they don't wait for me to inspect it. So I get CC'd on it when the WUCO gets it or the landowner gets the permit, and I briefly look at it, if a red flag or a yellow flag pops out to me, I request the application, I look at the application, and I would be looking, okay, did they try fencing this tree? Did they try fencing that? And that's, one thing that is missing in here is talking about the preventative stuff, because that's really, that's, I mean, 90% of my job is trying to teach people to prevent these things. For me, you know, I look at it, you know, so we got to, you know, so we, rather than, maybe it's a dollar threshold, to me, it's more, are we talking a building here? You know, are we just talking an ornamental tree? You know, how can we define that? And I think there's a way to get there. My concern with, you know, as the law sits now, is there's, you know, it's kind of testament to how the city was built and how good your maintenance staff is, that we're not having city infrastructure damaged by beavers, seriously, it's always kind of amazed me, or that we don't, you know, it seems, I don't, I've only had a few calls over the years, the majority of calls for small animals are people upset that the otters are eating the fish in the lake, which, we got to make sure that people understand that's not damage. The, you know, but let's say we did have some burrowing under the roads, under a bridge, into- into city infrastructure. Or maybe Nutria, I mean, we've got Nutria in both Willipour and Gray's Harbor, they're digging machines. And if they were to start digging too near roads or too near some of the, the houses or bulkheads, yeah, you, you really wanna get rid of them. And to be honest, they're an exotic species. We don't want them anyways. But right now, if that were happening, you know, I, I mean, I'm sure you could find a way to make a concession, but it would be illegal to, for that. You know, the other thing that, you know, I'd say there's, I've kinda been spending some time going into this, you know, and it just comes down to, yeah, we need to support, you know, I, I think bringing this up to date, but let's take our time and do it right. The, you know, I, I keep hearing the domestic animal thing. I think, I do agree that you need some mechanism in there for animal welfare. Is, I mean, is a stray cat run around? I'm not too worried about that. But if you get a colony of cats, and like the Jettie cats in Westport, it's volunteer-driven. You, you know, it's, but they have to trap the cats, span, neuter them, and then they put them back out there. And, you know, and I think the numbers have kinda dwindled over the years. Out here, the Jettie cats are kinda protected from the coyotes and other things that will eat them. Out here, not so much. So they're gonna be part of nature. But it, it's the ability to do that. But, but there again, it needs to be separate. And it does need to be codified. I, I've been very alarmed at some of the things that have happened out here. I work with a lot of rescue organizations. I just had one over in my area where a dog was abandoned on the beach. And, you know, there's no, we don't have an ACO in Pacific County. And, but yet, they followed this protocol, Sheriff's Department, and in the process, they, they call me and say, hey, are you gonna be around in case this happens? And, you know, long story short, I wasn't gonna be around part of that time, but I gave some suggestions. They followed my instructions and got, got the dog. And I didn't have, you know. But the thing is, it needs to be codified. One of my things, you know, kinda jumping around a little bit, you know how they, they speak to the, the animal control officer? And I think you might have, you, you might have covered that in there is, normally that's going to be, you know, like in, in my world, the, you know, you'd, you'd say the, the director or the, or the, the chief of police, or their designee, or a designated staff member instead of just saying the animal control officer. I think that's, one, it puts a lot of onus on that individual or individuals in, in your case. And, and I just, in that way, somebody, if somebody's gonna be on vacation for a couple of days, you can, you can cover that. And to clarify, when I set a trap or, 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 it's not just me, sometimes our officers will do it. I try not to, try not to let them do that in Ocean Shores 'cause they're a little quick to set traps. It's not exactly Ocean Shores. And, but there is, you know, normally, we're gonna let, like I, I communicate a lot with, well, both your ACOs now. And, but the other way, or we'll let whoever the on-duty officers know what's going on. And we tend to do that just about everywhere. Part of it is, you know, nothing worse than getting that phone call at 2:00 in the morning saying, hey, you got a bear in your trap and it's waking the neighborhood up. And, you know, it's like, wow. But overall, you know, I, I support changes. I just think need to work together and, 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 and separate, like I say, separate the domestic from the others. Make sure we're not putting undue onus on the, the city staff. And, and the better you have that written, the better, the easier it is for them to do their job and to interpret it. And I think creates a lot of confusion. You know, if we can, you know, in a perfect world, when this gets brought back up, if there's not a bunch of people freaking out on, online, then we know we've done it right.
All right. Thank you. Lisa Scott.
I just had a quick question. And, and sometimes I try to oversimplify something. And so I just wonder, can it be as simple as saying trapping is allowed on a case-by-case basis with permits or, you know, from City of Ocean Shores and Department of Fish and Wildlife?
I don't think so. I mean, we'd have to visit that. I mean, the, the hard part is, so on our, under our thing, the only thing that they have to get a permit from us for, there's two things. One is to use a connoisseur or, you know, a body gripping trap. One of the illegal traps that per RCW you have to get a permit for. Otherwise, certain species a landowner can set a trap for. Now, the problem comes in is, now, but they're required, they're not, they're not allowed to relocate that. You can evict an animal from a building. So say the raccoon scenario where, yeah, boot him out, plug the hole, problem solved. Well, there's some scenarios and raccoons, you know, I, if you've heard me talk, I'd rather jump into a bear trap with a bear than to jump into a bear trap with a raccoon. It's any day of the week. And, you know, so there are those scenarios where, you know, I mean, that the lethal trapping may need to take pace. Or, you know, it might be live trapping, but if you're not gonna evict on site, they have to be euthanized. We don't want them moved around. And so then the euthanasia process, you know, we recommend the American Veterinary Medical Association methods, which for the average homeowner, and, and it's gonna come down to the average own-owner that owns a firearm of sufficient caliber or an air gun of sufficient caliber to euthanize that end. Well, now you've got other city codes involved, so, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it, it's, the more you dig into it, the more complicated it gets.
Yeah.
You know, Mark, it might be good to have a list of what can be trapped by a homeowner and what we need to have an officer come in for, to some clarity for the public. And you got, okay, go ahead, Richard, and then I'd like to have the public weigh in here.
So, so I have two issues and Tom, Tom Kestner, anyway, talked on one of them, and that's how to protect that tree. And he mentioned a wire cage around the tree. And my thought, when I thought about that, okay, so now the beaver can't get at that tree, so he goes to the next tree. And pretty soon, we've got 20,000 fences around 20,000 trees. That doesn't seem feasible. Then I'm wondering, with your expertise, Scott, is, is there some other way to wrap that tree that will discourage the beaver from gnawing on that tree? Or maybe even discourage the buck from scraping their antlers on that tree? And let us, clue us in what that could be.
Well, sorry. There's a lot of different methods. Fencing is the best one. Part of the problem we run into is the most common method in some areas, like for the buck situation, is electric fencing. Got some code issues with that. So, you know, so just putting up, I mean, but the most effective is a wire fence around that. Are you gonna have beavers? There again, I'm, I'm, how many trees are we really, how big is the damage problem? Because there is a, if you got one beaver targeting a specific tree, yeah, I think fencing. How big is the problem in the area? And I'm just not aware of anything, you know, I mean, the last time, the last time I got involved in anything to do with a beaver in Ocean Shores that wasn't rescue-related was somebody's coconut tree being chewed on here. And it's been several years ago. And, and it, you know, and that, that one, actually, it was a permit that came across my desk. And, yeah, so there isn't, other than fencing, that's your main protection with the beavers, you know, or you, you know, and, but I don't, like I say, are they gonna go around? Are they chewing 1,000 trees now? Because that would probably tell me we have a bigger, we have a population issue that, that might be, would be, concern me for the health of the beavers.
So as I, as I did some internet research, and typically, beavers chew on pretty small trees, you know, just, and they're using them to build their dams. But sometimes they chew on pretty big trees. And if it's a pretty big tree and it falls on my roof, that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of damage. And so, so I totally get a passion, there's been several comments, well, I'm willing to sacrifice a tree. Yeah, I'm willing to sacrifice this tree, but not that tree on my roof. I just, I just can't afford it.
What prevents you from fencing that tree? I mean, 'cause that beaver, it's gonna take them probably a week to cut that tree down.
So, so how, what gauge of fencing is adequate to protect a tree from?
There, there's some instructions on our website. I, you know, I mean, I, I, you know, there's a lot of different, you know, one, there's a lot of information on the internet. There's some beaver working groups in Washington. But generally, you know, I would use a woven wire.
Like chicken wire?
No, no, chicken wire. Chicken wire's only purpose is to keep chickens in.
Okay.
Everything else gets through it. No, what, basically a woven, like a horse, woven wire for a horse fence, something along, something heavy duty that's woven, not welded, is what I would use.
So I'm trying to visualize chain link fencing with that?
Chain, chain link fencing would work if you just got some four-foot chain link fencing because they're not gonna chew through that.
I think we're kinda going down the rabbit hole.
Yeah.
Yes, but.
I, I mean, but we're kinda just, we know changes are gonna be, specific questions maybe can be brought up.
I, I appreciate, and, and that's, that's basically what I had. I just want to have, I want Mark to have some ideas about how to address.
Okay.
Things, so there's other tools, like I use animal scents, like bear hide to deter beavers. But it's probably not something we're gonna be doing in Ocean Shores, you know, you know, hanging bear hide from bridges and stuff like that. So there are other techniques, but I just don't think it's gonna be that consistent with Ocean Shores. The best one is just fence it.
Great. Thank you. So we're gonna move to public comment, and that is for the public to share their view or comments with us. It's not a question and answer period, so we'll go to public comment. Sherri had her hand up first.
Line them up. Just tell them the mic.
Yeah, you guys wanna line up and stand behind and line up? Might be easier because there's a lot of comments here. People wanna comment.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Well, first a comment. When we first moved into our house, I noticed two of our trees had plastic and wire wrapped around it. And I couldn't understand why until one day I came out and noticed chew marks in the third tree that was right next to it. Figured it was a beaver, so Kurt went to ACE, got plastic, wrapped it around, got wire, wrapped it around, problem solved. They haven't touched any of our other trees. My question is, how do you know the beaver you're catching is the one that chewed your tree? How do you know that the deer that damaged your house is the one you caught is the one that actually damaged your house? These animals do things, and we have many of them here in the city. How do you know the one you're catching is the one that did the damage? And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Next up to bat.
Hi, Kurt Dooley, Ocean Shores resident. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the effort that's gone into revising this ordinance. The intent to protect public safety, property and animal welfare is clear, but I believe two important changes are still needed. That is now down to one. Thanks to awesome questions, suggestions from the city council members, but also Mark Lawless himself saying that just since the meeting this, this afternoon that I attended, you've dropped dogs and cats, and I really appreciate that. So that takes away an entire page here. The second issue that I wanted to talk about was Section 8.20.110, Paragraph 5. As it stands, if a wild animal is threatening people, pets or property, the entire cost of trapping falls on the property owner, and I believe that's a mistake. When the threat rises to the level where the city and the Department of Fish and Wildlife must step in, that is no longer just a private nuisance, it's a public safety matter. We don't ask homeowners to pay the full cost when the fire department responds to a structure fire or when police respond to a burglary. Expecting residents to shoulder the entire cost of removing dangerous wildlife simply because the city doesn't have a trapper, either on staff or in town, could discourage people from calling for help or taking matters into their own hands. The ordinance may be well-intentioned, but without certain changes, it risks being impractical and unfair. And on that note, I, I was thinking about something else as, as the questions were trying to determine what should go in the ordinance and what should not go in. The more an ordinance tries to eliminate every bit of ambiguity and anticipate every possible outcome, the more cumbersome and impractical it becomes. Instead of providing clarity, it becomes so detailed and rigid that it's confusing to the public, difficult to enforce, and sometimes even contradictory within itself. Good ordinances should be clear and workable, not a maze of exceptions and technicalities. Thank you.
Right. Thanks.
Eldon Hyatt, citizen of Ocean Shores. Throughout my life, I've done a lot of trapping and all of that stuff, and I'm hearing about the raccoons and the beavers. You have live traps for them, is that correct?
We can't, we can't answer back and forth.
Okay, well, you do have them. So why don't you, and you said the chief of police is in charge of that part of trapping, train them and one of their officers how to use the traps, take them out and catch the thing alive and take it someplace else. And then on the deer feeding, we're not supposed to be feeding the deer. I got pictures on my phone I took today of three deer on a back porch of a house and they're feeding them. So, and then, oh gosh, I could stand here all night and tell you what to do, but you won't listen probably, but shoot the buck deer, tranquilize them, put a lacerator on and let them wake up and take off. That'll take care of that buck making more deer. Thank you.
All right. Next up.
Council members, I'm David Lynn, a long-term resident of Ocean Shores. While the current trapping ordinance could use improvement, this proposal is not the solution. It changes the language from prohibited to allowed. And in reading that, one could assume trapping is generally allowed and individually could act upon it. Trapping should be limited to exceptional situations, not widely practiced. A better approach would be to say that trapping is prohibited, subject to certain well-defined exceptions in the subsequent sections. The proposal says, the city recognizes that the practice of trapping animals is very hazardous in areas where families reside and businesses are carried on. And yet, it subsequently declares that it is the policy of the city to allow trapping within those very areas. That seems contradictory. Wildlife are beloved by most residents of Ocean Shores who don't want them harmed. One fact that everyone should remember is that if any wildlife is trapped, it will most likely be killed. In general, trapped wildlife cannot be relocated, only released on-site or killed. In our actions, we must understand the precautionary principle, which emphasizes taking preventive action in the face of uncertainty, shifting the burden of proof to the proponents of an activity, exploring a wide range of alternatives to mitigate harmful actions and to increase public participation in decision-making. The decision to engage a wildlife trapper must be conditioned upon well-defined requirements. We have to define what is considered to be threatening to human life and safety. It cannot simply be the mere sight of a bear or coyote. That is not a threat. When it comes to property damage, we need to require the use of self-help, actions that, by utilizing all available non-lethal techniques before any trapping is allowed. Since the section refers to trapping, Section 2.20.120 should change the word from hunt to trap. Beyond these fundamental problems, Police Chief Logan's laid out a number of issues in the construction of this proposal, and I concur with her observations. If the city really wants to deal with this issue, I have and I will offer to volunteer to provide the necessary expertise to develop proper language to improve this section. I've been extensively involved with wildlife issues with the Fish and Wildlife Commission for more than seven years, and I understand the complexity of human wildlife conflicts. The question remains, why rush to change this ordinance without adequate deliberation? Thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan Kinari. I rise in adamant opposition to this proposed ordinance. Let's be clear. This entire effort began because one homeowner complained that beavers ate her potted plants. That's it. Not an attack on a person, not a threat to public safety. A few planters sacrificed to the appetites of a hungry beaver. And from that single complaint, the city now proposes to legalize trapping inside our city limits. That is not policymaking, that is panic-making. We love our wildlife here. It's part of what makes Ocean Shores special. We live with deer, raccoons, otters, coyotes, and yes, beavers. They're not nuisances, they're neighbors. If the price of living in harmony with nature is a few is a few nibbled begonias, I would argue that's a bargain compared to the danger of setting lethal traps where children, pets, and people walk. Your own draft acknowledges that, quote, "The practice of trapping for animals is very hazardous in an area where families reside and businesses are carried on." So, why write an ordinance that invites the very hazard you admit is dangerous? It's like passing a law against speeding and then giving out coupons for race cars. All of this for a beaver with a fondness for landscaping? If beavers are now a threat to human safety, then I suppose we will need to license squirrel patrols next, maybe post deer on a watch list. Where does it end? Ocean Shores doesn't need to fear its wildlife. We need to live with it. That is the character of this community, and it is part of why people come here. At the same time, please correct the language that makes humane trapping of lost dogs and cats a crime. Ocean Shores is a community of animal lovers. Our laws should reflect that, and no family should be denied the chance to bring their beloved pet home. So, let's keep wildlife trapping prohibited and stop writing ordinances that confuse beavers with burglars and pet trappers with criminals, because a city that declares war on beavers over begonias has already lost its common sense. Thank you.
Jane Shadick, Ocean Shores resident. I had sent most of you an email with, with the issues I had with this. Number one is the very first procedural issue, where it states that the, uh, animal control officer is to make the determination about property damage. Um, and even the police chief said that they do not have the, they are not qualified to make such determinations, which brings us on to what Lisa brought up and something else that I, you know, it's, what is a definition? We, we all know, it's subject to each and every one of us. I have deer go in the rut, damage shrubs, damage that, and the way I look at it, it's on me. Either put up a fence or put in a different plant. It's no reason to eradicate or eliminate the animals. Um, Anna Scott said, you know, we haven't had that many damages here. Um, what I would like to see, if we do want to update it, is leave it basically the way we have it now. Um, uh, when there is threat to public safety, uh, human safety, W, uh, uh, W, sorry, WDFW comes in, um, they assess it, they handle the situations. This should not be on our local, our, our local officers in, in any way, and, you know, that is, I don't see the property damage, so I don't think that that's a big issue here, but I, you know, as far as public safety, that is, and we already have a route for that to be handled. So, updating is, you know, would be great. Um, on the other, this whole thing with the dogs and cats, i- it has been pushed together on this. Dogs and cats are not wildlife. Um, there is a whack that actually gives a definition for fur-bearing animals, and cats and dogs are not on that. Um, and so, if you want to address the legal trapping of cats and dogs in Ocean Shores, um, write a separate paragraph for that. Uh, leave the rest up to the professionals and the ones who, who are qualified to make those decisions. I, I would like to see, though, because of the incident with the bear, uh, and what happened with the local trapping, is that they do have to, if, if, you have to either have a permit, or some kind of licensing, or follow the requirements for trapping to even be trapping cats and dogs in here, because we've seen what happens even with that, and do you want everybody out there trapping cats in their area? Um, you know, that, that's the whole thing. We need to kind of keep this confined, and as Scott Harris said, going through regulations and following protocols and not just willy-nilly. So, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
My name is Lily in Broadbent. I've lived here for, had property here for over forty years, and my simple statement on this is, don't spend another cent of my money on this rather ridiculous effort. Let me give you a little background, okay? I do, I totally agree with the absolutely no trapping in Ocean Shores. I have had a raccoon break into my ceiling, fall through the roof, tear up the house. It took three of Ocean Shores' finest, and believe me when you call them and say, "Is a raccoon loose in my house?", they come to help. Um, the animal control officer at the time was really good at jumping up on my couch with his muddy boots whenever the raccoon would charge somebody, because they do. Uh, and I was just real happy to see that sucker go out the back door, and that was the intent of it. Uh, it was a $10,000 bill. My insurance covered most of it. There was the great beaver caper years and years ago. Somebody built a house on the lake, and they built fruit, they planted fruit trees down by the water, and son of a gun, they were gone. Somebody was stealing the, these people's fruit trees. They finally determined it was a beaver, and our animal control officer at the time trapped the beaver, took it out on, by Hogan's Corner, and turned it loose. And the next report that came, the beaver was seen waddling down Point Brown on his way back to his home. The solution, of course, was not to plant fruit trees down by the water. Uh, I've had bo- beavers take small, saplings out of my yard. Okay, I don't care. Uh, I like the beavers, and I would be furious if anyone trapped them again. I believe that we should let well enough alone, allow our animals to be animals. If we need help, by all means, we call in the, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and they have been incredible over the years at coming in when needed. But not everything is a threat. We had the cougar that was shot, left behind two babies, because someone perceived that it was a threat to the school. It wasn't a threat to the school, but anyway. Let's be reasonable, and let's not spend a lot of money on ordinances that serve no purpose. We don't want people, I had somebody trap a cat on my deck, and I came down here on the weekend and had to call the police to help me get it out of the trap. That's time, okay.
All right, next up.
Hello, my name is Taylor Priest, Ocean Shores resident. Um, I agree with most of the voices, uh, up here on this ordinance. I think it's a waste of money. We live in Ocean Shores. We want to protect our wildlife, and I would like to represent the voice of the animals who can't speak for themselves. Um, I don't think that bulldozers pay any attention to the wildlife that are living in the trees they take down to put up another property. I just would like to ask you all to please think about the point of view of the wildlife. I do understand that there can be safety issues, and that they need to be dealt with, but this seems like a panic reaction that will result in wildlife dying unnecessarily, people potentially putting themselves in danger because they start putting traps out because they misinterpret the language. So, please, stop wasting time on this. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Dallin, longtime Ocean Shores resident. Ocean Shores is a city of animal lovers. If an owner loses their dog or cat, they will do what it takes to get them home. Some dogs and cats return home on their own. Some are skittish and can't be hand-caught, lured into a fenced yard, or encouraged to jump into a car. For sixteen years, I have specialized in humane live trapping of missing pets. A properly set humane trap, monitored with a wireless camera, is often the only safe way to bring them home. Take Gracie, for example. She was on the run for nearly eight months. Without a humane trap, she would likely still be out there. Instead, she is safe at home. We have several feral cat colonies in Ocean Shores. It only takes one litter born outside to start a feral cat colony. Without quick intervention of humane live trapping, the colony can quickly multiply. Female cats can get pregnant at only four months, and they can get pregnant again only two to three weeks after giving birth. After cats are trapped, they are sent to a feral cat clinic, where they are medically assessed, spayed or neutered, vaccinated, flea-dosed, dewormed, and ear-tipped. They can then be returned to their colony. The choice you make regarding domestic animals will determine the outcome of whether families will be reunited with their lost animals, whose best chance of survival is to use a humane trap to capture them. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sylvia Fain. Um, so I'm going to talk a little bit about something that happened to me yesterday. I was with a friend, and we were at the Bistro, and this woman comes up to me as we're having a meeting and interrupts and asks, "Are you Sylvia Fain?" I'm like, "Yes." And she says, "Uh, I have a real problem. I took in this feral cat because I felt sorry for it. When I moved into this apartment right here in Ocean Shores, and within a few weeks, she had kittens. She had like six kittens." And this woman doesn't have a lot of money, and so she's feeding them and trying to make everything okay. Well, the cat goes out, and within three months, is pregnant again, except for this time, the cat had nine kittens. So, this woman now, at her house today, has sixteen cats. Most of them, fifteen of them are just little kitties, they're all feral, and those are the issues that Vivian sees, that, that I see, and that people talk about all the time. This is not an isolated incident. It happens all the time in Ocean Shores, and if you, I've been to Greece before, you know, it's kind of cute in a way. You go to a restaurant, the cats jump up on the table and eat all the food of the customers as soon as they leave. That's what we're going to end up doing here if we don't have some sort of a plan for trapping cats. Also, if you're having meetings about how to deal with domestic animals in Ocean Shores, why are you not using the people that really know that stuff? Of course, Scott, and you, you know, you guys are experts, but Vivian's been trapping here for sixteen years, so why is she not involved in this discussion? I, I don't get that. Or people from PAAS also. Um, you know, you don't just have to say yes, no, but as far as her getting a license, um, I looked it up, and it looks like it's only like a day program kind of thing, one day to learn how to trap. Well, Vivian can teach that course for you, so, um, I just want you to remember that it's not a small thing. Nineteen cats in one apartment right over here. Thank you.
All right, we do have one online. Nicole, you got that one ready?
There we go.
Go ahead.
Hi, it's Randy Peck. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Okay, I'll read my statement. If your dock is being chewed on by beavers, you put stucco mesh around the piers. We did that to protect the tree they were after. It's thick, heavy mesh that's easily available at Home Depot. The definition of damage is relative. You don't plant what they eat. You don't have bird feeders that attract multiple animals. You plant for them or prevent them. We live in a city by name only. We have half the lots undeveloped in the middle of a forest. Animals will come and go. They don't understand meets and bounds, property lines, or whose backyard they're in. When you live in the wilderness, or the wildland-urban interface, you adapt, and that's how you solve the problem. It's us. We need to adapt. We're supposedly the smarter animal, so why don't we react and respond accordingly? Vivian, yes, she's now taking care of the animal kennel. She's been trapping all these years. We should set up an ordinance that says the designated party by the chief of police, maybe the animal control officer, and he may say, "Vivian, you go take care of it, because she has the time and he doesn't." And that's the way you solve this problem. You protect what you can, you don't plant and introduce what they like, and everyone's happy. You've got to think this thing through smart. To have someone simply say they eat my planter boxes, or they're chewing on my pier, well, then you fix it. You don't have the wood planter box. You change what your habits are, instead of trying to have the animals change their natural habitat and habits. Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes our discussion session. Thank you both, Scott Harris and Mark Lawless, for, uh, sharing the information with us. And, um, we will move on now to, uh, let's see, we have no executive session. Uh, agenda review will be, uh, this Thursday, September 11th. It will be at 10:00 AM and not at 9:00, because we're having a ceremony for the 9/11 at the fire station. I would encourage everybody that can make it to come to that. Um, let's see, that'll be council members Lisa Scott, Lisa Gribble, and Allison Klein. We will now move to good of the order, and we'll start with Richard Wills.
I really want to commend Denise Sires as I listened to what she has doing on this LTAC, uh, project. Uh, she's building on what I think was a good foundation from last year, and it looks like this year is going to be fabulously better. Thank you, Denise. LTAC is a challenge.
All right, Allison.
I have nothing.
Lisa, Scott.
I just wanted to say one thing for good of the order, and I appreciate all the public comments, and Mr. Hamilton, you're right. Um, with the COVID-19, in particular, um, that ordinance did have, um, it, it did, uh, go off. It had a, um, an expiration date. I think it was in '22, 2022. Um, the, this is something that the, um, current mayor, um, he inherited. Um, he started in November of 2023, and immediately went right into some of the erosion control and clinic and, and kind of some of the higher-end issues, and some of the stuff that was on the back burner is now coming up, so we do appreciate the fact that you brought that up. Um, and with that, the city staff will be meeting, um, tomorrow, actually, to start, uh, looking at this particular item, and I just wanted to let you know that the city does listen, and they are working on it. So, thank you.
All right, Lisa Gribble.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Tom.
I want to thank everybody for putting their two cents in, because that's what we need. So, thank you for standing up, no matter which way you took it. Um, it's something we can at least listen to, take to, and hopefully settle this thing, okay?
All right, Denise.
Uh, since we had the proclamation for Constitution Week, uh, I'd like to encourage people to go to our Ocean Shores library. Uh, as you walk in, there is a display on the right by the Daughters of the American Revolution, uh, highlighting our Constitution. I also wanted to, uh, thank and commend the five new committee members, uh, after looking at their applications. It's really encouraging to see people who want to give back to the city and who have qualifications for what they have applied for.
All right, thank you. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All right, we're adjourned.